Start. All right, good evening and welcome to the January 18th, 2022 regular scheduled school committee meeting. It is now 6:00 PM and I'll call this meeting to order. As a reminder, this video is being both audio and videotaped. And if there is anyone else who's doing so, please let us know now. I don't see anybody who is doing such. So let's rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we'll start with a roll call. Kathy, welcome in person.
Kathy is superintendent for business.
Amy Thompson.
Antonella Rochella.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent Schools.
Sarah Trilio.
Bill Fonseca.
Elizabeth Martin, doctor.
Kathy Brown, director.
Good evening, number one. Perfect. All right, um, we have some minutes up for approval.
I move to approve the January 30, 2022 regular session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Bill.
Second.
Second by Antonella. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And aye.
One abstention, nay. No, that motion carries four and then one abstention. Thank you. Another set of minutes.
I move to approve the January 30, 2022 executive session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Antonella.
Second.
Second by Greg. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And aye.
And one abstention. So that motion carries four to zero, one abstention. Thank you, Kathy. All right, we have an opportunity now for visitors to address the committee. There's nobody here at Central Office. If there's anyone who is watching and would like to address the committee now is the time, if you want to raise your hand. I don't see anyone. Okay, right. And we will move on to committee and subcommittee communications. Greg.
Uh, I think I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, Antonella.
ELEAF has moved its gala to March 26.
26, the new date.
The tickets will be transferable. If you've got tickets ready, just bring them. Okay.
Yeah, because they bought them online, hopefully, so.
Cool.
Thank you. Um, Bill.
I'm good.
All set. And I'm all set too. Excellent. So we will move over to an update on the recent changes to some DESI guidance around health and safety.
Okay, Ms. Brown is going to pop up the slides on the screens behind me and on the side of me. Now allow us to do actually both update on recent changes and then move right into the update on curriculum.
Excellent. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so, um, as we were actually in the middle of, or toward the end of the holiday break, people may realize that there was an announcement by DESI. There also, prior to that, had been some changes by the CDC regarding health and safety protocols and how we respond to both a positive COVID case and, um, someone who might be identified as close contacts. Couple of points just to remember, as a school district, we follow the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education guidelines that may, in some points, especially with the recent changes, not be exactly aligned with the CDC. And so we're always going to follow the DESI guidelines or Department of Elementary and Secondary Education guidance. The key changes that came just at the end of the holiday break, as I said, really were around the time that individuals need to isolate should they be identified as a positive case or quarantine should they be a close contact. And so what does that mean? And so what that means simply is that prior to this change, individuals were isolating for 10 days. Now, they can, with the change, isolate if they have been identified as a person who has COVID-19 for five days. And on the sixth day, as long as they've been fever free for 24 hours and their other symptoms have improved. So that's, that's key. Fever free and other symptoms improved. On the sixth day, they may come back to, in this case, school. We're still under a mask mandate. The other part of that change is that they must mask for the additional five days, but we're still under a mask mandate. So we're all masking. Obviously, at lunch or snack, they would be able to unmask. And to the extent possible, we're going to be three feet and beyond anytime that happens. Individuals who are a close contact, identified as a close contact, they also would only need to quarantine for five days. And as long as they remain asymptomatic, no symptoms, no fever, no runny nose and some of the other symptoms that we've talked about, cough and so forth. On the sixth day, they'd be able to return. And really what they're monitoring is, do they become symptomatic? A best practice would be if you can get one of the rapid at-home antigen tests and test prior to coming back on day six, that would be a best practice. And then just share with us that the test was negative. Couple of other things that still remain, protocols that have been tried and true. First one's not so much a protocol, but should a school reach that 80% threshold of vaccination, and that's an 80% threshold with staff and students, then they do have the option to apply to Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for a, um, the ability to unmask. Right now, the town of East Long Meadow is in a mask mandate for indoors. So that would trump anything that the, um, the school would decide. None of our schools right now are at 80%. We're getting closer, but we're not, yeah, we're still, we're still lagging. Yeah. The other piece in terms of key points to remember is obviously physical distancing is important. The DESI guidelines in school is three feet or more. Right? And that differs, especially when you go to the next point, and we talk about close contacts. The CDC still is to find a close contact of six feet or closer for over 15 minutes, which is a cumulative over, say, a 48-hour period. However, the DESI close contact when in school and masked, it's three feet, less than three feet actually, for that 15-minute period. And that would be over the course of a school day or two school days. And so that's how we have been identifying or will going forward be identifying close contacts.
Remind me, Gordon, is that only unvaccinated?
So the other, yeah, a vaccine then allows an individual, if they're vaccinated.
Right.
Allows an individual who may have been identified as a close contact to remain in school as long as they remain asymptomatic.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. Good point.
And have, with that in mind, be updated, have all the flow charts been updated for the schools to reflect the adjustments?
So we've updated all the guides online.
Okay.
We actually removed the flow chart because it was getting, um, too confusing as we started to update it. So what we've done is we've gone more to sort of the bullet scenarios. And that's been added to our online. And I believe we still have the DESI memo, um, as in the news, um, on the front page of the webpage.
Okay.
So families can go there. Certainly, if they go to the webpage and they want more information, they simply just go to District Information and then click on Health Services.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's a great question. Thank you. Um, other news, and this seems to be changing every hour. As our families may know, we, back before the holiday break, had voted to enter into the test and stay program. So right before the holiday break, we applied, um, put in the application to DESI during the first week back from the holiday break, towards the end of the week, received an approval and acceptance email from DESI, saying that we would then hear from CIC Health, who is the company with whom DESI has contracted to help their test and stay program. We got that information last week. And Ms. LaBombarde, our nurse leader, and I participated in an introductory orientation call on Friday afternoon. That gave us some of the, sort of, the base elements that we're going to need, such as if we are going to be a test and stay district, it makes sense probably to have, um, one individual, should they be able to recruit that many for each school, to help with the actual testing process and coordinate that, um, each morning where needed. What they're finding is that, a lot of times, they will meet, say, at the high school because it opens the earliest, they may meet as a full group with someone from, um, ELPS, who would help coordinate the whole thing. And then, based on need, what we're seeing in terms of identifying close contacts, also based on, um, families that have provided consent and authorized that, yes, their child is interested in participating in test and stay. Um, so we talked about all of that. We are working through, we now have access to their portal, and we are working through, um, how we upload our first test sample, which would be, obviously, a staff member who has given consent at this point, so that we can start to see how the whole portal works. And then, um, we also have to get into ordering and uploading our entire roster, so that electronically, they can start to indicate which students have given consent. So, next few steps for us, as we continue to learn the portal, we'll be sending out those consent forms to families, explaining that we are in the program. If they wish their child to participate, they would be, um, providing consent. They can do that electronically. One key element is, right now, the East Long Meadow Public Schools has, um, decided to participate in the, simply the test and stay program. And so that would be the part where someone's been identified as a close contact but would like to remain in school, and they are not showing symptoms. So for that five-day period, we would enable them with, if they have consent, to be tested. As long as they're negative that morning, they go and they go about their regular school day. We have not participated or applied to be in pool testing. And we have not applied to be in symptomatic testing. Symptomatic testing would be when we, um, have someone who either comes down to the health office and is dealing with symptoms that, uh, are connected possibly to COVID-19. Or if a teacher or, um, the nurse has, uh, been working with a student and recognizes that the student may be symptomatic, they, you know, with authorization, would be able to test and see if that individual possibly is dealing with COVID-19. Right now, we're not participating in that, only the test and stay. Key point of information is that that consent form, which is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's consent form, has all three programs on it. I cannot change that.
Right.
So people are, I will have a cover letter that will try to explain all of what I'm saying right now. But as long as families know all their, all they need to consent for, if they would like to engage in the program, is test and stay.
Can we highlight that before we send it out or no?
I can only highlight in a cover letter. I can't change their form. Um, and then we send it out. And really what it is, is it's a link, as far as I understand it. And then they can do it online. It's actually harder to do it in the paper.
Format.
Format. They can do it in paper format, but then we would be uplinking it to electronic spreadsheet.
Gordon, logistically speaking, since we warned our, our goal is keep students in school and to participate in the test and stay program. And because we're only doing test and stay, the, the family would be notified that they've been in direct contact either by the health department or by our nurses.
Right.
Logistically, would the family at that point be able to consent electronically for the next day for test and stay or is it that?
No, I mean, we, we would love people to consent prior to, but you can consent at any time.
Okay, great.
Yeah. So as we contact them, we'll provide also the information to, if they're interested in participating, here's where you can go, here's the link, so that you can consent. And then we'd be able to allow you to participate in the program. Yeah, great question.
And do we anticipate that kind of going out within the month, within?
Hopefully, within the next week or two.
Okay.
Tomorrow's going to be a busy day. I started this presentation by talking about the fact that this information keeps, keeps this, excuse me, seems to keep changing, um, on an hourly basis. And so, this morning, late morning, um, the governor had a press conference, and I believe that the Commissioner of Education and possibly, um, the Commissioner of the Department of Public Health, I didn't actually see the press conference, but the superintendents were called into a quick meeting at 8:30 with the Commissioner of Education to let us know that a press conference would be happening regarding a new option for their testing program. And this is an option where, uh, should, as far as I've read so far, but I will go to the webinar tomorrow at 1:00, um, should a district be participating in pool testing? Or symptomatic testing? Neither of which, right now, is the East Long Meadow Public School, schools participating in. Um, then the option to allow families to, or the district rather, to opt into a testing program where we provide test kits to families, and all the testing would go on with families and staff members at home. Um, I'll learn more about that. I don't know, other than the information I just provided, too much more about that program. There's a webinar tomorrow. Should there be a way to enter that with just being in the test and stay program, then that might be an option. Right now, as far as we're reading, thank you, Ms. Brown, for picking that up in the fine print. Um, I don't believe we have that option.
Okay. Thank you for letting us know. And then, another was your last, um, little point. But can you also just give us a brief update too on the change and how your report, and how our reporting numbers as a district?
Sure, absolutely. No, thank you. Um, so, I'm sure everybody is riveted on Wednesdays now, waiting for my weekly letter. Uh, we've gone from 3/20/22, uh, where I was writing a letter every time there was a positive case or cases, there was only one letter per, uh, school on a given day, should there be a case or cases identified in a given school. Um, and so in some, on some days, there might be three, four, potentially five letters going out with all five schools experiencing a case or cases. Um, given the, the surge that we experienced after the holidays, that seemed to become overwhelming. Uh, that keeping up with, uh, the contact tracing and being timely with those letters, that was not, um, unfortunately going to happen. Actually, that was actually pre holidays and starting to become overwhelming. So what we've gone to is every week, the school districts, um, in Massachusetts are required to send to the Department of Elementary and Ed, uh, secondary and having a tough time today. Let me, let me start again. Districts across Massachusetts every Wednesday are required to send to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education their number of positive cases, both students and staff, um, in the district. And so, starting in that first week back, what I've done is, once I've reported to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and I've broken down what we've seen in our spreadsheets up to a certain timeframe, as we have up till 5:00 PM to report, um, I've been trying to break that down somewhere between the 2:00 and 4:00 o'clock timeframe. So I have time to then report it to DESI and then get a letter out to all families. So what you're seeing is, I will provide, um, by school, the positive cases, and that number includes staff and students for each school, each week, Wednesday to Wednesday.
Thank you for clarifying.
Sure. Good question.
Any questions for Gordon?
It was updated. Never changing.
Hopefully, the numbers come down a little bit this week, but.
Yeah, but I mean, if there's any change with DESI, when, you know, if we get that other program.
I mean, it may be a case, that's, that's a, a good point, um, where the next agenda, we want to put this on, this new option, because at that point, maybe we're fully into test and stay. We can see what kind of consent we have and where our families are.
Right.
Thank you for the updates. All right. And then we're looking on to review some curriculum and professional development updates.
Yes. So Ms. Brown is with us and provide us some information as to some upcoming events, which I think are pretty significant.
All right. Um, so, um, as you know, our full day PD day is this coming next week on the 26th. And the six to 12 schools will have innocent classroom come back for part of the day. Part of the day will be building-based. Um, and innocent classroom, obviously, it's about reducing stereotype threats, building relationships with students. So it's connected with priority number one, am I not? Oh, okay, sorry. Priority number one in the accelerated roadmap around fostering a sense of belonging and partnership. And along that, those lines is also, we're bringing in Massachusetts Safe Schools Program for LGBTQ students. So DESI actually provides professional development free for, um, school districts. And this is for elementary specialists, probably bring them back for, uh, other groups as well. But the elementary specialists, um, reached out to me specifically, a few of them, about really making sure that they knew what they were, they had, uh, the tools that they needed to have in order to create safe spaces for, for kids, all kids, including LGBTQ kids. We'll also be bringing in ST math through the, for the three to five schools to, uh, specifically looking at ST math data in terms of, um, meeting kids where they're at. So continuing, obviously, along the lines of ensuring the grade appropriate instruction, but also, um, filling those gaps as we're moving forward. And the pre-K to five, I'm sorry, I should say pre-k to two meta book, basically, is going to continue with their letters training, which is around how, the science of how kids learn how to read. It's not a specific curricular program. It's just really about, you have teaching teachers that, that background information and the skills to reach kids, um, in terms of teaching them how to read.
And are those self-paced modules, Heather?
So we got both. So they're coming in. And, uh, teachers also have the option to do the online. And, uh, for teachers who do the online portion, uh, they get ELPS university credits. So we have some folks who are really moving along. Some folks who are really excited and are moving really fast. So they already have completed the next unit and that's what we're having training on. But it, they told me it's totally fine, terms of the pacing.
All right.
Um, the cool thing about doing the, um, the self-paced is that they provide experiments so that you can go into your classroom and try different things and come back to it. So.
Thanks.
Um, yeah, that. And then, in terms of our curriculum work, the first meeting for the K to five curriculum committee will be on the 20th next week. It's actually this Thursday, what am I saying? And, um, I am ready, I promise. And, uh, we met, the ELL team met in November and will be meeting again in February, um, again, trying to make sure that our curriculum is aligned to the new WEDA standards.
When you say curriculum, which particular curriculum are you?
Well, that's the other thing. So one, this is really familiarize, or familiarizing ourselves with WEDA, so that when we are looking for curriculum, uh, to, you know, high-quality curriculum to replace what we have right now, which is, um, pretty, it's teacher-created and it's strong, but we really need something, um, that's aligned to the new standards. So whether we revise what we have or go ahead and purchase something, it's on the table.
And those are for Easton classes?
Yeah, so it, it's challenging because ELLs, um, they have their own classes, but they also often work closely with the teachers. So while we're looking in the curriculum committee, for the K to five at least, we're looking at math, but we're also looking at literacy, just because there's so many, uh, opportunities for funding at this point for both. We're also making sure that it meets the needs of ELLs as well. So on top of that, we also need to make sure that they pull out curriculum is aligned to WEDA standards.
And are the L students, are they with all the, with all the kids or their specific classes that they're just in together or?
Um, they're fully included. Okay, yeah. And they get, uh, pull-out services, depending on their level. The, the amount of time depends on their level. And the ELL teachers are also very good about continuing to check in on, you know, our formal ELLs, um, and making sure that they're getting what they need as well. Because a lot of times, even when you have your reading, writing, speaking and, uh, listening down, there's still cultural things that you can, you know, support them with. So.
The innocent classroom, are those modules?
No, that's, they're actually, they come in, um, well, not physically, it's virtual.
It's virtual.
Um, but, um, they do have things that they ask the teachers to go and try in their classroom and things like that. A similar model, but it's not like an online computer-based program. It's real people. Oh, and I meant, I didn't mention UDL. So we're also bringing in, uh, someone from Novak Consulting to work on, um, some more UDL training with three to five teachers as well. As it's part of our, our goals, it's part of our equity, uh, roadmap that we're working on and obviously connected to making sure that kids are getting instruction, that they're in those chef and time shackles.
Does that happen inside in some?
So do you have half of the school day, uh, half of the PD day than the plan? And then the other half of the day is, um, is school-based?
So only for secondary. And the reason being is traditionally, there's the two district days, and then there's the half days that are building-based.
Yeah.
I took a building-based half day because the innocent classroom likes to have those experiments or do this and then come back. And so to make sure that I wasn't taking away building-based time, I gave them some building-based time on the district day.
Yeah.
And then the next half day is innocent classroom for six to 12. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So will they be seeing in this PD, um, will they be bringing in examples of things that they tried in their classroom and seeing if things worked or?
Yes. So it's kind of, you know, information, but also working together in the small group work.
And then do the three to five educators come together for those PDs? Or does Maple Shade have ST math in the morning while Mountain View is having UDL? Or are they collaborating across the buildings since it's virtual?
I have them collaborate, but this time I'm having them, um, separate for two reasons. Um, they're kind of in different places with ST math. And they are, all these folks are coming in, which is really exciting. So I want to keep the groups really small.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, as of now, as long as there's not like a search or something. I have a backup plan with them all. So. And then I just wanted to make sure that we are on the same page in terms of the process that DESI recommends for selecting and evaluating and selecting high-quality instructional materials. This is the process that we'll be following. Um, they've been providing a lot of professional development that I've been able to be a part of, to learn from other districts. And they have all kinds of tools and things that they've been sharing that I'm, um, able to bring into this work. Um, and so the learn and prepare is just making sure that we have the curriculum literacy, so that we are in, prepared to really look, um, and be knowledgeable about what we're looking at. Um, it's a time to make sure that we're on the same page with instructional vision, our priority and our priorities and parameters are in place. Um, and then we go into the investigate and select. So I really appreciate how the DESI process really just slow it down. So we're not just jumping into curriculum, but we're sitting and thinking about, well, what is it that we really want to make sure that we have beyond being aligned to the standards? Um, and DESI provides rubrics and all sorts of tools to help with that investigate process. So with the K to five committee, we'll be doing the learn and prepare and the investigate and select stage this year, so that we're ready for launch. Um, because there are two big, uh, opportunities to have this curriculum paid for. For, um, DESI has an accelerating mathematics where they have vetted, uh, materials that are high-quality and have, um, strong reviews on ed reports available that you can choose from to apply to, to get those as your. and have strong reviews on ed reports available that you can choose from to apply to get those as your core curriculum. And then they recently came out with an accelerating literacy grant as well that has certain parameters to ensure that we're, you know, really choosing high-quality material. So those will be part of the, those will inform our parameters because I, we did apply for both of those grant funding.
Wait, so do we have these instructional materials yet or?
So when you apply, it, what it's saying here is that you, you have to have ones that meet expectations on the curate, which is a Desi, or all green and their gateway one and two on ed reports. These are listing ones that you cannot purchase because they do not need those.
Some of these were what, very widely popular and utilized throughout Massachusetts and beyond.
Across the nation, yes. There's just a lot of information coming out now about how there, you know, that's what the letters training is about. Just how the research informs practice and better ways to teach kids how to read. And that are, you know, helpful to really reach all kids.
Second one aspect, I know like some of the math ones, they tend to be free to use, but then you pay for teachers, teachers how to use them. And so how would a grant work with some of those?
None of these are free, to be honest with you. So the only one here is illustrative math is free curriculum. But to get things like workbooks and lesson plans and, I'm sorry, not the lesson plans, but the digital platform and things cost money. The other thing that this pays for is the professional development, which is, it's really strong. So I was able to write a grant to get illustrative math for the pilators. And I was able to write it so that Desi paid for us to have three different sessions, but three groups for each session. So I didn't have to pull a lot of folks from one school. And the reviews for this last one, they really thought it was very valuable. So I have two more of those. And so because there's a lot of pilators and pilators are really, for the most part, really appreciating the illustrative math, that's the direction that we could go in. But I really did kind of jump the shark a little bit with a pilot before the learning part. So we're just going to back up a little bit. The reason why we went with a pilot is because Desi said, hey, we'll pay for you to pilot. You know, and, and the people who are piloting it, you know, really wanted to, they were invested. And then, of course, we're always, the ELPS recruit team continues to have our own PLC, if you will. We're continuing to work with the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity around our recruitment, hiring and retention processes that obviously connect back to that accelerated roadmap, fostering a sense of belonging and partnership, while the research that shows how our staff makeup is important for the students that we serve. And we can, we're going to continue to work with our district MTSS team, as well as the, the school-based MTSS teams. We're meeting as a district team on the third of February to look at interventions, tracking interventions, particularly going back to attendance, as you had brought up last time, and looking at our survey data and having some protocols that they can then bring back to their teams to help.
Heather, by that time, do you anticipate having IREDA as well?
Yes.
So we'll be able to, at the mid-cycle, bring data on a lot of this information. Not only sort of where we are, I'm looking at the leadership team professional development slide. So the work with the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity, remember, those were recommendations that came from the Equity Audit Report. And these were recommendations that we felt over the last two years, MTSS being one of them, and looking at our recruitment, hiring and retention processes. Those were recommendations that could be implemented relatively quickly and they had resources to do so. And provided their high-leverage recommendations because they provided, they can provide immediate support in some cases and result for our students. So one of the things that we'll be able to report out on, and we're going to share with our MTSS team on the, this is a district team on the third, is even though COVID interrupted everything, we have been able to continue to move forward as many districts have. And we were looking back, and this is Ms. Brown's work, and she's done a phenomenal job. Just that the, the original assessment that MTSS teams probably now three years ago took when they went to the training, there were two trainings offered by Desi that year. And then after you went through the training, you came back and you did an assessment or a self-evaluation of, where do you think your district is? And what Ms. Brown started to do, we were talking about today, actually, is just notch some of the things we've been able to accomplish over the last two years, even though we've been dealing with really operating in what I've termed COVID operations and sort of redefining last year, almost every quarter, how we were going to participate in teaching and learning with our students. And so we did a lot of work last year, we'll continue with our MTSS team, continuing to work and build sort of our skill sets so that we can support students. But we also hope by the end of the year to have a product in terms of what is our recruitment, hiring and retention process look like? And how do we, as a system, do a better job just attracting diverse candidates that will help support and enrich the work we do here with our students?
Thank you. Any other questions for Heather Gordon? We have a great professional development session on next Wednesday. All right, Pam, I think we have one donation.
Yes, I do. So when you pack it up, and first of all, we're waiting for Nella. Is a request for a school committed to officially accept $1,749.84 from Brennan Barrett, and that is from their fall commission. And these funds will be for future benefits to the students there at Mountain View.
Motion?
I move to accept the $1,749.84 from Brennan Barrett to be put into the Mountain View student benefit account.
Perfect. A motion made by Beth.
Second.
Second by Aunt Nella. Any further discussion? Right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Pam. And we're taking a look at MOU from last time.
Yes, so this was an MOU that was discussed one meeting previously. Both an executive session and I believe was tabled then in regular session. There were revisions that were recommended and I took it back to the ELEA representatives and the revisions were agreed upon along with that one asterisk statement that is in the middle there after section A. Where it says, section A will now read as follows. Into that paragraph, you see the word by, and there's an asterisk in it. Says by mutual agreement, the two days beyond 100, the 180 student school day shall be the convocation day and the staff work day prior to the start of school for students. So that asterisk for further definition is on the last page there, where it just simply acknowledges the fact that for the next two years, two school years, the convocation, staff work day will follow the schedule outlined in their current unit contact.
Yeah.
Thank you for taking that back.
Sure.
Motion?
Move to approve the memorandum of understanding on the ELPs professional work year effective July 1, 2022.
Motion made by Greg.
Oh, second.
Second by Bill. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Suppose nay. And that motion carries five to zero. Thank you for taking that back. Right, next up, you're gonna talk this a little bit about budget development.
Okay, so this is actually a team effort, I think Mrs. Blair is going to take quite a significant role in outlining all of this. In here, or in your packet, but connected to the budget and the budget development process, there's, there's a lot of information that we tried to provide and give you a look at sort of where ELPS is currently in a few different ways. Whether it be through accounts, through the overall budget, through some of the positions that were reduced over the last two fiscal years. And then hopefully, by the end of our presentation and discussion tonight, build a way forward in terms of what would the FY23 budget look like or request look like? Given that the last meeting and certainly the presentation with the town council, where Islam Meadow is in a good fiscal, in good fiscal standing, in good fiscal shape. And hopefully, this could be a year where departments are allowed to grow beyond level services.
And in truth, that's really what this is meant to be tonight for our discussion, is just really a picture of where we've been and kind of our current context, because you've also been working to engage our administrators around some other budgetary priorities, correct?
Correct, and I'll mention a little bit tonight, but that'll be further defined for the February 7th.
Okay, so tonight's really more just an overall picture of our budget, if I'm understanding correctly. So we can then start to think and plan for it based on the priorities of the administrators.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so in your package, you'll see I do have a few documents that I've given you, trying to paint this picture clearer for you. To remind you that that first page is, you know, where, where, what is our budget, right? And to also remind you that preliminary FY23 chapter 70 numbers typically don't come out until the first week in January. So I don't have those numbers, but I wanted to remind you of what it was for the last few years here so that you could just be on top of that. And then, of course, the middle, as Mr. Smith said, we, we've lost a lot of positions over the last few years. And although our needs may have changed, I don't, I think it's very important that we still remember what, what we have lost during this budget process going forward. And then to, to just let everyone know that for every half a percent increase to the FY22 budget equates to approximately $160,000. So just to kind of have those numbers, you know, fresh in your minds. The next spreadsheet that you can.
If I may, before you leave this page, one of the things that we talked a little bit about, but I do want to mention because it's certainly taking shape in the meetings with the buildings that we've been having. So you see some, a good number of positions over the last year that have been reduced. I, I think one of the key pieces that we've been discussing with the buildings is that there may be requests for these actual positions or titles to come back. But we know there will be a need for additional FTEs that may be defined in different ways. And it's really going to be based on need, but that's, so as we go through this process, what we're trying to hopefully figure out, and that starts in the discussion, not only tonight, but started in the previous discussion, is how do we balance between what our request is in terms of operational budget and using the ESER grants that will be with us through this year into next year and to at least September of the following year? And how do we use that strategically to move us out of hopefully COVID operations back into more normal operations? But build a, a structure, an infrastructure that allows us to really then, once we get out of that, to soar, to have the things we need to support our students. We know, as you've seen the data from the fall, that we have learning gaps. We also know that we have students that are suffering with social, emotional and mental health issues. And we know that we also have staff who are struggling as well. And so these are all things where we have to be mindful of and figure out what's the support or structure that's going to put people in the best possible situation to teach and learn, because that's what we do. And in many cases, that may be additional staff. However, in the previous presentation, we were talking about curriculum. All of it's connected. And it's figuring out what's the structure that we build over the next two school years to allow us to be in the best possible position as we move forward and away from these federal grants. Just wanted to mention that. You'll see some of these titles coming back on the February 7th meeting. You won't see all of these titles coming back, but you will see requests. And one of the things we're trying to be mindful of is how we do this over the course of two budget development cycles. What's going to be needed urgently for next year? What maybe can be balanced? And I guess that's all I'll say. I don't want to get too specific and down the road because we haven't finalized all of that information yet.
So the next spreadsheet that I have here, let me just back up to just say that when, when the budget process starts, as you all know, I'm busy in the office, moving up every single bargaining unit. So I might start, like, I do start with my unit A, and I need to move every single person up. And that's to make sure that longevity is increased and, and any retirements. I just want to make sure it's very clear that any retirement that's going out, we put a placeholder in there. And what we have traditionally done since, since I've been here with, with Gordon is we put in a master's level A as a placeholder, which is $68,507 for next year. And so, you know, I could just watch it, everyone, to really be clear that all of those retirements and that savings is already taken into account on, on these numbers here. So then, once I'm done with unit A, I do the same thing and go to secretaries, clerical, paraprofessionals, administration. And again, doing the, the same type of thing, looking at longevity and the increases contractual. And then we always have those that are up for negotiation. So right at the top of this spreadsheet, I let you all, just everyone know that on your contractual includes, excuse me, a little dry tonight. Contractual increases include salary and longevity projections in FY2023. There is a percentage placeholder for pending negotiations. We do have clerical and custodial bargaining units up this year. We are just starting to set those, those meetings to, to discuss negotiations. We do have, let's see, we have, I believe, oh, no. So.
Long list.
Yeah, there's a good number, there's like seven administration, there's a couple other individual contracts, I believe. So yes, Mr. Smith will be very busy.
We have to stop hiring in the same year.
Yes. So what I wanted to show you here is I always think it's important as, you know, your questions come up, like, where were we last year? Where are we now? And where are we going next year? So it gets a little tricky, and I tried to put this on this nice spreadsheet, you know, condense it all together to, to show you exactly where, where we've been and where we are and where I see us going. Over to the right, I have listed, so for unit A, you'll see that it's contractual obligations. And I state right there that there's nine retirements. One is contingent upon the nurse leader and whether she stays or not. So that's still just a little question, you might see that one change, I'm hoping. Then you'll see your administration contractual obligations, there's seven administrative contracts up for negotiations, and there's one retirement. Clerical.
Is there an assumption there, Pam?
There, there is an assumption in there as well, that's correct. And again, so.
Add one thing. So as we go through this, and Mrs. Blair does a fantastic job, we often get asked, how many retirements do you have? That's a question that the town council may ask, that's a question that the town financial oversight committee may ask. And we can answer those. But the, the underlying reason for that question is because they're looking for more savings. And what Mrs. Blair does a fantastic job of is identifying where the retirements are. And so when we're going through this process, we're already incorporating the savings for those retirements. So that's something that we get asked every year. If there's a, you know, as you hear that question, if there's a clearer way to answer that, you know, that would be helpful. Because I think that gets confused sometimes as we get into budget discussions. That the budget that we ultimately present for discussion is one that is capturing retirement savings in it.
Exactly, as well as, as well as negotiations. I said with Gordon to come up with a conservative, yeah, enough, right? We need to be playful about that, on what should, what should be in the budget to be able to support those negotiations. The last thing we want to have to do, we've done it together one other time, is to have to go to town council for additional money. The last thing we want to have to do, we've done it together one other time, is to have to go to town council for additional monies. All business managers across the state of Massachusetts, always, this is how we budget the school. The town, I think, does it a little bit different, but we do things a little bit different, right? So again, going down the spreadsheet, you'll see, um, I think I, we're going to leave off on the administration and, uh, the next one. Glasses, that'll be helpful. Clerical, um, we have one non-union clerical contract up for negotiations and we have two retirements. And those retirements are for, um, two employees. Yeah, who's leaving us, who have been here for over thirty years each. So that's why you, you see, uh, you know, reduction there. Custodians, um, no one's, no one is retiring. We just, we have negotiations scheduled this year. Paraprofessionals contractual obligations and we have two retirements. Again, those are, are employees that have been with us a very long time. Employment at will agreements. These are per I E P, Individual Education Plan, the, the needs. And what has happened over the last couple of years, as you can imagine, is we have outsourced and used contracted services more than, than being able to keep staff. So that's why you're going to see some changes in that one, which is pretty significant. And then the retirement account, again, that stays almost level there. So, you know, overall, um, oh, then I come down to one other thing. I just want to mention that eighty-four percent of our budget is on the salary side. So, you know, it's pretty significant, right? We're in the people business, so it makes sense that we probably do these people to help. I guess I'm referring to F T Es being, you know, needed in our, in our future to, to, to help us get to where we need to be. On the expense side of the budget, I want to be very clear that I have, I'm just in the process of analyzing that. As you can imagine, there's just a lot to do and I, I just, I want to, I always take my time with this. I want to be very sure of where we're at. I've got the special ed database that I analyze and go over with Dr. Welch as well as, uh, Mr. Smith. So we can really make sure that we're on top of all of those expenditures. We've talked about out of district tuitions, um, that are significant. So it ta, it takes time and certainly I'm hoping in the next week to be able to have more information so that we, when we come back next time. But there are a few things that I do know, um, on the expense side. And that, that is that L P V E C is showing a four point five percent overall increase. That's pretty significant. Athletics is showing right now a potential forty thousand dollar shortfall. So circuit breaker, we talked about, um, earlier in the year, how we had rolled over circuit breaker, which is always in our best interest to try to keep that as, as high as we can. Legally, we can roll over one whole, one fiscal year's worth of circuit breaker reimbursement. We were able to do that last year. We just spoke about recently how, um, a few years ago, we had to go to town council because we had an influx of specialized students. And, and again, um, you know, it's confidential and I won't go into too many details, but we need to be on top of that. So I'm very pro at keeping that balance up so that, you know, we can sustain those changes. But I'm analyzing that, like where are we at? And again, it's, it's a big picture in the next few weeks. But if things were to stay as is and that we did not meet any increase in, on the expense side. It is possible, um, that we would be at one point nine percent, which is, which I think is terrific. And I want to remind everybody that with unit A, the way increases work with that contract is, um, it was two point two five percent for next year. But in between, when people are in between steps, going from like a step six to a step seven, until they get down to the very top. Where it's just two point two five, often in between, you've got four to six percent increase. So for us to be at a one point nine percent is, is really, really, um, very, very good.
For level service.
Level service.
For a level service, thank you very much. Yes.
Dan, the shortfall on that, like, uh, you're in.
He's talking about for next year, if we.
The operating budget.
Yes, yes.
Because it's cost will be going up.
Transportation has been very, um, very costly and more expensive than he played, you know, planned for or that we could foresee. So the way athletics works is there's different, we have a big spreadsheet that shows all of the different funding sources. Because we have operating budget, right, that we have, um, funds in a few different line items. Then we also have the gate receipts as revenue, that's a funding source. Then we also have the athletic fees. And I know we talk about you all would love to not be able to, not have to charge our parents, but unfortunately we just can't. This program costs about a half a million dollars to run and, and, and we need those revenues. And then on top of that is the athletic revolving, uh, i, if we rent anything, you know, the, any of the gyms. And then that money comes back in to help offset athletic expenses. So right now we're, we're taking a look at it. Again, I might see an area that, um, during this budget process behind the scenes, that something comes down. And I, you know, might, might say, oh, we're able to, I, I think we're, we're okay. Or I might come back and say, you know, I foresee a twenty thousand dollar deficit here. So, um, I'll bring all that information back in a few weeks.
And are we going to do a cost analysis on L P B C transportation relative to where we were and where we are?
After we're done with the pandemic, maybe?
Okay. For now, I just.
Thank you. Yes, no, I, I agree. This was a year of transition. I think, um, everyone knows it's a bit challenging. Um, we've come a long way. We are still short. I don't want to pretend that everything is just perfect because it's not. We all know that. We are still short, um, of us. There's, there's still short drivers. This pandemic has certainly done its toll on that business. But yes, I think we're all on the same page, Greg. We want to make sure.
Yep. As of last Friday, there's still short forty bus drivers.
Yeah, see, so. Yeah, so we, again, we really appreciate all of our parents' understanding and their support during this. Yeah, things will, I'm really hoping cautiously optimistic, things will be much better next year in transportation land.
And that's providing a signing bonus, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it's still out there.
Yeah, so if anyone needs a job, transportation, bus driver. Any other questions on this spreadsheet at all? So, um, then I wanted to give you. A backup to where those numbers come from that I just had on that front of that spreadsheet that we just left. With the unit A and the administration clerical, and as I said, I go through. So I have larger spreadsheets behind the scenes that then grab numbers from smaller spreadsheets to then come into this larger spreadsheet. And I just really thought it was important for you to see all of the different categories. I put the F T Es on the left-hand side, so you see F Y twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. And then the budget numbers for twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. And, um, what you will notice is the bottom line that I'm seeing. With just the salary side, as I said, I'm still analyzing the expense side. But at the salary side, we're at an increase, a potential increase of six hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred, nineteen dollars, which is where that one point nine percent comes from. What I do want to make mention is you'll notice the F T Es all the way over to the left. You'll see that F Y twenty-one, we have four hundred and six point two. But this year with four hundred point five, I mean, that's in, again, the prior year, F Y twenty, we were down additional bodies then. And so next year, I'm projecting us to be a four oh one point five. If you go then to the next sheet, which is the F T Es. I've broken them down by the unit A, administration, clerical, custodial, all your different bargaining units there for F Y twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. Full disclosure, which I put here, um, F Y twenty-three operational budget and, um, F T E includes the two adjustment counselors. I felt compelled to put them in here because the F T E was lower because of a few different things. The medical not being F T Es and, and going on the contract services side. So, um, any questions?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think our F T should be the same as it is this year, and I know we dropped one at will. But I, I, my, I know I said this before, I think we should be at three ninety-nine fifty-two or fifty. Because it's, again, that's, that's funding for grand and then assuming they're in the budget as F T Es.
As we present, um, you know, more formal budget to the town. Can we highlight that as, you know, similar to here's, is it's going to be, as I said, a two-year process where we're building off of. Sort of Esser provides the funding to meet immediate urgent needs. For example, um, every school system is having significant challenges with staffing and stubbing. The, the fact that we were able to last year hire building permanent subs has really helped meet that challenge. Not every day, but most days. That's on Esser. That would come off obviously as Esser starts to go away. If, if there was through our regular substitute account, the ability possibly, and it made sense at that time as we built whatever year, fiscal year budget that may be. You know, a one building permanent sub per building, that's a discussion for them, but that would come off. Other elements of sort of personnel. Additional lunch monitors, additional recess monitors and so forth, those hopefully would also come off. These, these positions though are going to be and possibly positions that we bring to, um, in the next meeting. That's where the balance is going to be at some point. They're going to have to hit operational budget. And the hope is that you're building for the future, but we want to be also responsible and not say, okay, we know we're at one point nine percent. Fiscally responsible growth is maybe, I won't even throw out a percentage yet. But, and that would allow us to put these positions, whatever those are identified into operational budget. And carry these positions, I'll just, I'll use one example. Not knowing right now what the evaluation process is going to produce for our preschool. Maybe there are a few positions in there that we're going to have to over time build towards. And so maybe Esser carries a couple of those positions and we continue to build. Or, you know, whatever the recommendations are, we look at what a, a, a plan will be over the course of a few years. To make sure that we're supporting our youngest learners as they enter for the first time into, enter into E L P S. That, that's.
Dismissing the validity or the necessity for the two counseling positions. I agree that we need to do it, but they weren't funded through operating budget this year. So they weren't approved in the budget. So for me, they're not level services, they're grant-funded positions, like we have listed on the next column. So if you look at twenty, if we had a twenty-two grand in that number, it would be twenty-seven. Or I know. Yeah, so it's like moving from one column to the other, but it's supposed to be, the column is supposed to be level services. And the other is supposed to be grant-funded, so we don't have to talk, we don't talk, we don't even talk about that when we go to budget. I mean, we talked about the total, but it's not up for negotiation, grant services. We pay for them out of grants, towns says, okay, go for it.
Yes, okay.
I just, because I want to hold the town to the same standard. So if we're gonna. Move over, what prevents them from moving over? Because I would like to ask them, what was F T Es this year versus next year? Because I think they're going to be drunk with money from the government. So we're going to be funding all sorts of positions all of a sudden. So let's just look at how many additional we are. And so the two are additional in my view, in terms of what the town has to fund.
So you don't want to try to bring these two positions into.
Into operational.
I do.
Okay.
But they're not.
So you're saying reflected in F Y twenty-two.
It's not a level, this is not a level services budget.
The one point nine percent is inclusive of.
Yeah, right. And the four oh one is more than four hundred. It really, or it should be three ninety-nine because we lost the I will.
Right, and, and what we're saying is that.
That's fine, and we explained it all again, but it's not, they're not part of the level services budget.
I'm having a flashback now of maybe four years ago when we came to the budget and had these discussions. And I felt like it was almost like being penalized that we didn't bring that our needs, our current needs. Do you remember that year?
Yeah.
Forward to the committee because they said, no, that, that should have been part of your level services. So I guess that's where my mindset is. I'm, I'm thinking, shouldn't this just be part of our level services?
No, but then we could move any of these twenty-five grand positions over into the operating budget, except they were already here. And so now we actually have four hundred and twenty-six F T Es. I mean, that's the same logic and we can't do that. So how come two is okay and not twenty-five?
Because we gradually, I mean, my thought process, we gradually.
It's fine.
Need to be having a plan.
I agree.
So that we do move the district forward and don't go backwards because we're going to be in trouble when these Esser grants.
No, I agree with that, but they're not level services. They're not funded in operating budget, so we have to fund them next year through the operating budget.
Yes.
But we have to disclose that they're not funded this year through the operating budget. So they shouldn't be counted as F T Es in the operating budget. They're not this year. So it shouldn't be counted as level services.
So it should be an add-on.
Yes, because we're asking for new funding for existing positions. It's still new funding, so we funded four hundred and point, four hundred point five two F T Es last year through the operating budget. Everybody should know that. We should talk about that every year, four hundred point five two. Well, next year, level services, even with these two counselors, because we have to take it off Esser, level, well, well, well. Now I'm contradicting myself, but you know what I'm saying? The, the town didn't fund them the first year, so.
The need is here immediately.
The need is here. Let's, let's sing from the rooftops that the need is here. I'm just saying it's not level services.
No, no, and, and I understand, but I think you would have to figure out, maybe not you, but maybe we have to figure out as we present next week or next meeting to all of you. Distinguished, these are individuals that are here now working. And then we're going to be bringing forward other roles that we feel are going to be needed next year to continue the work that we're trying to accomplish.
Right, but we'll get, so Ryan said he had, what'd he say, seven F T Es and then maybe he's got one or two other extra positions, right? He can't all of a sudden add it and say, hey, but that's because I had somebody else working, but it wasn't in the operating budget, so that's my level.
You know, I'm going to say what you're saying. I, I still want to make the distinction that they're, they're here doing the job.
Right, but we funded them through a grant. We didn't fund them to the operating budget because we couldn't because the council said no.
No. So what, sorry, Craig, the three. Positions that are funded through the grant and unit A, what are those reflective of then?
Where are you?
Under unit A, revolving funds, three point six eight.
So that, that's.
I was just going to say, there's a Mecca grant.
Okay.
And, uh, two point six eight teachers with title one.
Okay. Gotcha.
Like food services, those employees are here every year, same employees, mostly, right?
Yes.
But that doesn't mean they're counted in our operating budget as F T Es that are.
They're also self-sufficient.
I know.
But they, but they are an F T E.
But not funded through the operating budget.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's all. We should look at operating budget F T Es holistically across the town. Because I want to know the town side too. So I just want to be clear on, on F T is funded through the town. And that's the only way you can count the F T as funded through the town.
So the food service workers aren't funded through the town, but if they're full-time, they still get benefits.
That's correct.
They count as F T, just like these adjustment counselors. So we've been doing that with food service. Are they aware of it? The town, some of the town knows because we discussed this with them. So we just, if we did another line item, just like we do with food services, make them there, it is, but just make them, so I just feel they're.
But there has to be a different conversation.
The food service, they can always stay revolving funds.
Yeah, and most of those employees do not qualify for benefits.
Right, because of the hours.
But I'm just saying in terms of how we've been presenting in the past. Because you don't want to lose the adjustment, imagine how difficult they are to get.
No, I, I, all we hear is that it's been a game changer for the students and there's, and.
But in the end, if we don't get additional F T Es funded, then we have to make a decision on what we're actually going to fund in F T Es and we keep the.
I'm just going to remind everyone that the town council can't tell us which. What to do with the budget money. They just tell you what the bottom line is and that's the school committee's decision, that budget.
Which is going to be what it is. So the one nine that we're saying is what it, you know, they're going to come back with whatever number they're going to come in with, regardless of what we tell. I think, so I just want to be able to say to them.
We're hoping that we're going to.
Look at growth.
Yes, look, look at growth, and this is the perfect time to move not only the town side, but the school as well forward. So that we're not going backwards when these grants end, you know?
Well, but that's what we're going to talk about in three weeks, right? Is to put the, those positions that we're thinking about. Right, so that's another conversation, I think. I'm sure there's a, a lot of good.
We've also talked about a two-year plan, what's going to happen down the road. These are all part of the conversation. Once these grants go away, we've got to, you know, there has to be decisions made. We can't, I think we're in agreement, we can't lose the adjustment.
It'd be very planful and.
Then we have to plan, and this is what this purpose of the discussion, start planning now with no dollar commitment. But this is coming, this is coming down the road. Then we have to plan, and this is what this purpose of the discussion, start planning now with no dollar commitment, but this is coming, this is coming down the road, we're just making you aware of it. Grant funded now, but we're going to be sliding them over.
Sure, the town must be having these conversations in their department, you know, and.
Yeah, well, that's my concern though, Pam, now we're going to add like fifteen positions through the town, and we're always crying about how we're adding employees and how much it costs town, and now we're adding all these positions, and then we'll all be surprised next year that we can't add anything else, because we're all bone dry. I'm just saying, we get to compare apples to apples, I I think we need to present it.
A good plan for the entire town.
Well, that's it, that's it, it's not just. But it's a year by year thing in our reality, we can only go one year at a time, every year changes and the council changes.
And we don't know what's going to happen with COVID.
Oh, it's not over, but yeah. So.
I want our town to function well, I want our town, all the town departments, not just us functional and have what they need, but I'm also like, these children are captive prisoners of ours. And we're responsible, and I just wish. I know they care about the kids, I know, I know that everybody does, but it's just like, I'm just looking at this whole. What's happening to the kids in terms of their mental health right now, or nobody's dealing with it, right, and it just, and I know we can move numbers around. And use those elsewhere, but I just hope they understand that things like that are just a. It just has to happen, yeah.
And and I don't want to give the impression that we're looking to not keep the adjustment counselors, those individuals that are actually working, I don't want this conversation.
Still.
For the clarification. Don't make some adjustments.
You know, I don't know, I don't know everything, I. I just want to be able to ask the town, how many FTEs they funded last year through the operating budget? That should, there should be a number for that, right?
There should be, sure.
So how many are going to have fun this year through the operating budget, there should be a number for that, that's all, so I want that to be a real number, not. A number that's not really true, because some were shifted.
But I think there is a way to make that distinction, I think this is the beginning of it, because to Gordon's point. They are here.
Right.
Their funding source might not be the operating budget, but they're currently here during the work we need them to do, and like, that's almost like. The first phase of a long term plan, we need to transition them from existing in like grant world. And into operational budget, and if that has to be like the first step.
Right.
Then we've got to make that step, and maybe that needs to be taken into consideration when hearing the. Uh, requests from the administrators, because if that's really like top, then we've got to figure out that plan first.
And and just to give you an idea, I don't have exact numbers, but caseloads are already close to fifty in terms of, that's elementary school. And that's both. Our guidance counselor, who in years past has tried to operate both as guidance counselor and adjustment counselor and adjustment counselor, so. Well, that's where River Valley Counseling came in, and we've now overwhelmed them.
Yeah.
So. Just using Maple Shade as an example, you know, we have four referrals that are waiting, and I don't know if we're going to get them in. Because we already have capped out with the amount of students across the district they're seeing.
Well, we have the the conversations we have to have are. To that point, that we've got, we can't service everybody right now. Through no fault of anybody, it's just the overwhelming nature of the pandemic.
All right.
Ready to move to the next one? Yeah, okay, so the next sheet I put in there, Circuit Breaker, we already spoke about that earlier. But I do always like to give you, you know, the history on on Circuit Breaker and the revenue that comes in, or. So it's a revenue source, it's Circuit Breaker is reimbursement from the state for special ed. Expenditures that go over four times the foundation amount, and I think that that's like forty seven thousand dollars, so. It's the monies that go past that forty seven thousand dollar mark above that, but then go, Dr. Welch does a a report each year, and. If if the expenditures are eligible for Circuit Breaker reimbursement, then the state gives us back, and that's why I put seventy, seventy two, seventy five percent. It has been at seventy five percent, I anticipate it's going to be at seventy five percent next year, that could always change. Uh, in prior years, we had, I think, lots of discussion on what percentage to use, but I'm thinking that that we're safe to use seventy five percent, so as I'm doing this. You know, analyzing the expense side, that that is my plan, unless you direct me to do, you know, something else. And again, I use right at the bottom of the sheet, I just brought the current numbers from FY twenty two down. Um, to just say, okay, if everything stayed the same, if there's forty, you know, forty eligible students and the expenditures, the eligible expenditures are three point four million dollars and. Uh, less the foundation, like what what would we get in in revenue, so I just kept everything the same, which I had done in prior years as well. So is everyone okay with me staying at the seventy five percent using that?
Yeah, I mean, it's a difference.
There's there's not a huge.
There's not a huge difference between seventy and seventy five percent, you're looking at, you know, sixty five thousand dollars, basically.
Right, but when things, when the budget's extremely tight, that's sixty five thousand.
Oh, no, right, no, I agree, I'm just saying, what I'm saying is, use the seventy five, because if you go to seventy, it's it's only sixty five thousand dollars, and I, to your point, we may need it.
Yeah.
Is that the, is that the uh, the balance now, over at about that nine six seven? Because it's one year.
Yes, yes, and I will be working on the um, second quarter for you, I'll try to have that at the next meeting. Uh, the last sheet, the last sheet that I put in is the FY twenty two School Department funding sources, what we call the whole picture. Uh, we always talk about, you know, the the wonderful grants we get and how thankful we are, and that if we didn't have all of these grants in addition. To our operating budget, uh, we would be going to the town to request a lot more money. I just want to remind folks that in these numbers this year, we do have the Esser one and Esser two, I'm sorry, the Esser two and Esser three. Funding in in here, even though we haven't used the Esser three yet, we did receive the initial grant, and they always give you an initial ten percent of the grant. Like you don't ask for it, it just kind of goes, gets wired to the, so so the months and the money's here, so I felt I needed to put it down, so that it was very clear, but this is showing an additional five million dollars. You know, on top of our operating budget, which is significant. Anyone have any questions on this here?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to need a long term plan for the Esser money. Like more defined, or we can't really know.
So through the application process, Mrs. Brown, let that. There's a plan in place with the best information that we have, you have to, like, like with any grant, you have to give like your best guess, really.
So it's looking at things like, what PPE do you still need? What additional personnel might you need? You know, that would be around supervision and lunch and so forth. Uh, then we get into professional development, curriculum and so forth. As as you go forward, as you're trying to build this infrastructure, as I've termed it, Ms. Brown, there's other areas that. You would say that we highlighted in that Esser grant.
Staff, PD, curriculum, PPE, permanent building subs are.
And the monies have to be spent by. The third year.
Oh, it's it's September thirtieth, two thousand twenty four, Esser three ends. There was something I was just going to.
Just in terms of long term plans without Esser.
Heather, what is that, is it twenty percent that has to be a set aside for? Learning loss, I think that's the term, things like like half a million dollars that has to go specifically towards learning loss, does that sound correct? She's bringing up the grant.
Do you want me to bring up that page or? Okay.
So while she's doing it, I'll just say that, yes, we we put a plan in place and reevaluate as as we go forward, and that's why. I didn't put the 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 Esser any FTEs in the grant FTEs, because I wasn't sure, not sure where we're going to be, so I didn't want to give false information there, just my thought.
So yes, twenty percent reservation Esser three funds to address loss of instructional time with evidence based interventions. So our whole plan is on the website, you had to post that in terms of Esser three. And you have to say what you're using, what data you're using, and then, you know, cite the research behind whatever your decisions are. This, like any other grant, can be amended. Um, so, um, like Pam said, we did based on what we projected, but we can always come back and and tweak it if we need to.
And did you say, Gordon, we're needs that for test and stay, so that.
So test and stay actually comes through the DESI program.
It's additional funding.
Yeah, so I mean, remember, they're they're getting federal money too.
Sure.
That puts this whole thing together.
Okay.
And right now, he can outfit all five buildings.
We're hoping that that comes to fruition. So those are my documents that I have for you tonight, I hope that answered a lot of your questions, um, understand the budget process a little more behind the scenes. And I'm always available to answer any questions that you all have, but again, I sort of remind folks, almost eighty four percent of our, your operating budget is on the salary side, that's just, that's just the reality.
No, thank you, Pam, I think that helps give us, gives us some context. As we prepare for the information that Gordon's getting ready for us from the administrators relative to priorities. As we think about. Forward growth and continued response to the impacts of COVID, so that's helpful to kind of get a picture of where we are, so we can start to lay. A path forward where we need to be. Right, we have teacher, the daily teacher substitute pay rate was the next piece that we're going to talk about.
And I think, um, Mrs. Blair also will join in on this, we'll give her a rest for a moment. What, you know, that earlier in the year, we had looked at, uh, and it's the back page of the packet here, it's attached. Our part time and support staff employment, and we had updated those numbers based on currently current contracts that have recently been negotiated, but also. Looking at minimum wage as it continues to increase on its way to fifteen dollars an hour. As we did that. Two things came to our attention as we turned into the new year. Uh, one, some of these increases have now put. Uh, sort of an imbalance, if you will, between. Subpositions and other areas and our daily on calls substitute positions for teachers. But also. Similar to what we do with all positions, is we we try to do some market research and see where is the market, now we also know that COVID. Operations have increased competitiveness in all markets, and. As you can see. We. Are clearly lower than most communities around us in terms of what we're paying on a daily basis for an on call substitute. So as you look at it, we're at eighty five across the board, some districts differentiate in terms of what that maybe they'll pay if they have someone with a bachelor's degree. Or if they're bringing in someone. Who is a former teacher. Uh, and so you can see in alphabetical order, the districts around us, what they're paying. And then at the bottom of the page, we're recommending. That we move from the eighty five dollars a day to a hundred dollars a day, both for someone without a bachelor's degree. Uh, I can say currently, and we're probably losing them this week. Uh, we would have struggled to stay open had we not had the college students who are on vacation, uh, who've been subbing in our buildings. And I know that's true, going on in the. Other area districts, they have college students who have been on break, were willing to sub, and that's kept classes and buildings open. If we have people out there who have finished their degree and are interested in subbing, we'd love to have them too, um, and move that to a hundred dollars. And then if we can entice and there's more freedom these days for our retired teachers, and we can get retired licensed teachers who are interested. Uh, they have. Not really been interested in our on call daily substitute positions, they have been interested in the higher paying interventionist positions where we're paying a higher amount hourly. Um, and that's going well right now, um, that's, this year is the first year we've been doing that. We'd recommend maybe making that differentiation for the first time, going to a hundred and twenty five dollars an hour, see if we can get some of our retired teachers coming back and helping us out.
I'm having to see this, because I think we've been paying way too little for way too long, that said, part of, I know it's because we've been paying the paras. Way too little for. But I'm I'm happy.
Well, we never had trouble getting subs, that's the other issue, that hasn't.
No.
Supply and demand requires. Whatever requires, how many hours? Is a sub para work in a day, six and a half or six, what is it?
The sub teacher?
No, sub para or sub custodian.
Either one, sub para, sub teacher, they're working six, basically.
Is that what we pay them for the day?
Yeah.
Because that's six, six, six hours of sub para makes ninety nine dollars or ninety one fifty.
So that's, yeah.
And then a sub custodian or secretarial worker is one fourteen.
So it's like an eight hour day.
Oh, I only just six, even at six hours, yeah, fourteen.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we're definitely showing.
So the paras are making the same as the teachers on a new scale, so right now the paras are making more than.
Yes.
Which is why we figured both from a competitive market competition standpoint, but also just keeping the balance.
Yeah.
But so as you'll see, you know, the green are highlighted to show you, those are the LPD EC districts, but I thought it was important to also reach out to some other business managers from other schools around us to kind of. Um, so that's what I did, I either talked to the business manager or the HR department, so my information.
How many sub days do we pay on a typical year, Pam?
How many sub days?
Yeah. How many substitute. Uh, teachers do we have on a annual basis?
Well, normally. I don't even want to give you.
My question is just, what's the. It's a fifteen dollar helmet, so fifteen times what?
So this year. When I talked to payroll, Tammy said that actually the numbers for the subs are significantly down because the permanent building subs have solved such a huge. Such a, right, and that's, that's under Esser. We're not sure what we're going to do next year, I don't have an actual number, Greg, so what I can tell you is that I'm confident with the savings in the sub lines. From the permanent subs that are being paid on the Esser will be able to fund this.
Yeah, but we're paying that on the answer.
Right.
The permanent building subs, not the regular sub account, we have some regular sub lines in the operational budget.
Yeah.
So that's where the the regular daily subs would come from, not the permanent buildings, so I'm saying that the permanent building subs who were being, who are being paid under Esser grant. Are are taking care of a lot of our need, because they have those same bodies in, it just has, it's it's just been, as they've said, a game changer as as well.
Regular substitute account line hasn't been withdrawn as much, because they're saving.
Yes. There to, yes, to be able to.
Cover the fifteen dollar.
Your operational budget, I can show you after.
Yeah, well, we can't carry it over next year, oh, because.
But you can keep the permanent building subs on Esser for next year.
I don't know where the savings is, Pam, because, oh, because next year we're going to use Esser to.
Permanent building subs.
So, but the same thing's going to happen, then we're going to have a cliff when Esser ends in the sub.
But hopefully, at that point, we won't have the draw for that many subs. I think would be the.
Then we're going back, so if we were to go back two years, right, on a normal year. We would have fifteen dollar increase on a sub, how would we manage that additional cost? Which is really how we should look at it, right?
Well, except. Except we don't have to look at it that way this year, so now because I'm building the budget for twenty three. I can go back now over the next week or two and analyze that more, like how many subs do I not? Only if I don't.
After that.
Only if.
Only if your demand, if your need for subs stays.
Well, you, it's gotta be, because you're, well, no, not even all time high, because you're saying it's creating sure savings from normal times. So if we get rid of them, we should look back at normal times, but now we have fifteen dollars above what normal times.
So if I keep the budget line the the same.
Yeah.
Without increasing it, which I see on that backup sheet, which I can show you, the lines stay the same.
Yeah.
Okay, like whatever that may be, twenty thousand dollars at Maple Shade, or whatever the number is, if we're not using the that line item.
Because we have.
Because we have Esser, so I don't need as many daily subs, which would be paid.
But two years ago, if that number was twenty thousand, right, so we said, no, it's not.
Yeah, yeah. It's not accurate.
Then now we're going to have fifteen dollar a day to all those people. So that's two hundred and thirty some odd.
So we have the funding this year to to be able to handle that. Exactly, and I will do a projection once I.
Yeah.
I need to go back, because you're absolutely right, that there's been. It's not significant.
There's the potential.
There will be.
Plan for two years down the road.
I don't know that it's.
Because we have to go back to normal times, and then you've got fifteen dollars per day, it's not a huge number.
But if we had, but if we had never. If we had, but if we had never exhausted the entirety of the substitute account historically,
Yeah.
then there might not be a cliff.
Right.
Potentially. We'd have to go back and do the research to know for sure.
I need to go back two years prior to COVID.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, but I don't, I don't, I think we'd fund it every year what we need every year. I don't think we don't fund it for what we need it for every year.
Well, it's.
It's minimal. The only thing is twenty thousand, and we're adding twenty percent, it's going to be four thousand. So it's not.
The difference, the difference is too, if you're a sub and you sub in the, the three districts in our area, you're, you're gonna go to one of the other two. You're gonna hop over to Wolverhampton.
Yeah.
It's five minutes difference to make ten dollars more a day. It's, it's.
Yeah, but my point is, we've never had. We've never had.
Well, we, we might now, because they've up there is pretty good.
Right, yeah, that's what we're hearing. This is all, it is all.
They used to propose to us.
Yeah, thank you.
I moved that we, uh, modify the, um,
Daily.
Pay, daily pay for substitute teachers as recommended, uh, on agenda items seven point one.
A motion made by Greg.
Second.
Second by Beth. Any further discussion?
Just to clarify that, to me, a hundred dollars per day without a bachelor's degree, or at least a bachelor's degree in one twenty-five for retired or licensed teachers per day.
Like, I have a question about the retired or licensed teacher. Why are we paying twenty-five dollars more for that? Are they expected to do more than the other two?
Well, I thought is that they actually can implement lesson plans better.
The classroom.
And so therefore, if we know, it's hard to know, obviously, sometimes for the sort of impromptu or spontaneous absence. But if you know you're going to be out, and you know you're going to get a retired teacher, you're going to probably leave different lesson plans that you might leave for just a, a sub you're not familiar with whom you're not familiar.
And I think Gordon said we were in trouble getting the retired teachers.
Generally, we have not done retired teachers to fund to, so this is, this is hopefully an incentive to get more retired teachers into our sub pool.
They come in with more confidence. I'm not saying that to be disparaging, because I've subbed to you, you know, those first, that first couple of years, that first year you're subbing, you're always kind of like this. You know, now you're kind of like, yeah, I got my stuff together. But if you can, you know, recruit somebody that just comes in with a little more confidence.
Yeah, and Westfield, um, I changed these numbers because they just voted it in. These, these were just voted by their school committee last, last week. Um, I had this ready to go, and then she emailed me and said, they voted last night, so those are brand new numbers there.
I used to work much.
Thank you.
What, what are our long term?
We have about like ten minutes left, just had to get one in.
Okay, yes, one ten.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, oppose nay, and that motion carries five to zero. Hopefully that brings some relief to the spirit. All right, and our last agenda item for tonight is up, or is the beginning of a conversation on the hiring search for the director of student support services.
So, um, this is the start of, uh, a search process that could take, uh, the next couple of months. Um, and it's a pretty significant search. Um, the director of student support services, uh, basically is overseeing not just special education, which we know is, um, incredibly comprehensive and large and a huge responsibility, but also underneath student support services, we have services, um, all our health services. Uh, so our new administrator for health services still would have someone to whom she can go, um, in terms of day-to-day planning and so forth. Uh, but also the person's responsible for our MECO program, uh, responsible for all Title IX situations and civil rights discrepancies in the district, homeless students, uh, dealing with students who might need, um, do illness or hospitalization tutoring. Uh, all of that falls under student support services. So it's, it's a, a large position, and it's, um, due to the fact that special education is within that, um, job responsibility. It's actually a, a position that is eventually hired by the school committee. School committees legally hire superintendent, um, in our case, assistant superintendent for business and the director of special education. Uh, so this is a, an outline that certainly can be revised. Um, should we need to revise different areas of it? Um, and certainly with timelines, um, there may be changes as we go through. But given, uh, the many different areas of the district that this position touches, that first screening and first interview committee um, is pretty large. Uh, I think we need to pull in a number of different constituents. So anyway, the recommendation would be that that first group coordinated and facilitated by me would consist of a school committee member. Hopefully, we can select, um, an individual this evening. The assistant superintendent for business, two administrators, one elementary, one secondary. Uh, our MECO coordinator, our nurse leader. Uh, then we would also ask, um, unit A to seek out volunteers. Uh, also, as we do that, identifying, you know, the different areas that, um, operate really on a daily basis with, uh, unit A positions that, uh, such as our school psychologists, our special education teachers, our team facilitators, our related service providers, um, such as occupational therapists, physical therapists, and so forth, uh, speech and language pathologists. So there's a good number of individuals there that we would hope might put in for those five slots. Um, and then certainly our paraprofessionals. Uh, we have two clerical staff. Uh, we could probably have more clerical staff throughout central office, but we have two clerical staff, uh, in central, or excuse me, student support services, and so we'd want to at least include one. And then we'd like to look to probably our PAC, um, or maybe some recommendations from our current student support, support services director, Dr. Welsh, for some parents who might be interested in being part of this. Uh, and then that would be the first group that we'd bring together, and hopefully we can get that group together and named by the end of the month. Then we'll post this position and have it run basically between January thirty-first and February twenty-third. During the weeks of February twenty-eighth and March seventh, bring that group together and, um, and we might be able to up that, um, meaning that, uh, earlier in February, start having them working on, looking at, um, resumes and so forth, and at some point, bring them together around questions to be asked and rubrics to be used and so forth. Interview that week of March fourteenth. Select finalists hopefully that week, uh, for the week of March twenty-first, and then hand off to a committee for the finalists, which would be all of you. Uh, and I can help facilitate that. However you like.
So that's our hire in the end, then, huh? First, because she's been here a lot of minutes. Watch, yeah, um, sixteen seems big. Uh, I think in the past, those haven't been quite that large, huh, or?
No, I think for the assistant superintendent, uh, for business, we had close to fourteen, I would say. It was pretty large, yeah. I, I don't disagree. It is large. I think we'd probably have to host it in, say, the library, uh, for the high school, just to get up.
You don't want to slim it down a bit, like one.
I just think, um, I, I'm not sure who you knock out. I mean.
Well, if you went to one administrator, two unities, one unity, and a parent.
I, I would, I think you have to have, uh, a good number of unit A and related service providers. There's a difference, uh, way that you are implementing, um, and strategies used at the elementary level versus secondary level. Um, I mean, I'm open to revisions. I, I agree with you. As I started to put it together.
One unity and one parent and one administrator and go to thirteen.
Lucky thirteen.
I don't know. I mean, I don't know. It doesn't matter.
Sure, no, I, I'm.
I just think that's a large group to try to.
I agree. It's, it's, it's challenging.
Especially. Yeah, so, so two.
Well, I'm bringing it to all of you, I can.
And then can you just clarify how, so that lottery, educators within the E L E A opt in to that lottery?
Right, they put in their name, and then they conduct a public lottery. Generally, they do it, uh, say, it either the high school library, or branch library, and they let everybody know.
And that has, and that includes in that pool, the related service providers and just general members of unit A.
Correct. Anybody in the unit A. Although I would encourage, as I said, special educators, uh, school psychologists, uh, team facilitators. I mean, those are folks, uh, who work on a daily basis, or the director of student support services. So it'd be fantastic if they'd be interested in taking part in that. Um, which is why I started with a, a higher number there. It was lower. I think it started at three, but then.
We had fifteen on the principal search for the high school.
Say that.
We had fifteen people on the principal search for the high school.
But it didn't look that good, I think, as we did by, via Zoom too. Some of them were Zooming somewhere in person, so.
Actually, with, with the high school.
We were out here, but, yeah, but it was Zoom, but not everybody was here all the time. I mean, you just don't know who's going to show up too.
Yeah.
Huh, I mean, I'd be interested in being on it. It's, I don't know who else would, but just throw that out there.
I know I said it's a large number, but I do feel like.
Well, I think you go to one administrator, four unities, one unity, and one parent, go to twelve, but.
I'd actually like to see the number of parents increase.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I think when you're talking about individuals who are coming to you with concerns, in some cases, really specific concerns about the needs of their child, you, they need to have a voice in terms of who's overseeing that process.
Well, yeah.
I don't think that, because they're very varied in terms of what they need to, the students. So the parents are all coming from such emotional and, um, different backgrounds.
But I think when you look at this from a perspective of where is that voice coming from? When you're talking about two potential votes out of sixteen, how does that parent voice get skewed potentially in who the individual is that's selected?
Right.
You have a very, we have a very top-heavy E L P S focus, which I get that individual is.
We're always like that though, because we're.
But I think, just because it is, doesn't mean that that's how it has to be. As much as we're staff-heavy, we're servicing families.
But we represent the families as well.
So then there's three out of sixteen.
But there's, that's the biggest group. It ultimately comes down to this, this board. I think sixteen is more than, I don't want to add more, is it?
Well, then I'm saying if we trim one of those down, then maybe we should add a seat to parents. Cause when you think about the stretch of parents, K to twelve, you're not going to get, you're going to cut a parent group out potentially. Unless you find somebody who has kids sprinkled across all of them, you might not get, get a voice of somebody who has a high schooler.
So can we do one administrator, four unities, one unity, and three parents?
Yeah, I just think we should have at least one more.
Four, five, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. Whatever, Gordon, what else, what, what should we add back to that? You can tell me for us.
He said it kind of fast, I'm not gonna lie.
What's that?
He said it kind of fast. I didn't keep up with what he was saying.
Um, what he said was reduce, uh, one administrator, so you have one there. Um, take unit A to four, uh, unit E to one, and, um, add a parent.
So everything is thirteen.
The other thing with the administrators, though, having one from elementary and one from secondary, they're also coming from completely different mindsets too, in terms of what their students need, because, you know, Metta Book is just infinitely different. And, and a lot of times, the kids that are really, really, um, in need of extra services when they get to the high school, you've got, uh, you've got some stuff going on there. So I don't know if maybe, you know, if, if you wanted to reduce the para and the unit A, but I, I think I, I'd make sure that you have two administrators from two different angles. Cause similar to parents, because it's a different, it's a different environment. You know what I mean? In, in Metta Book, they're coming in there, and they're in tears. By the time they hit the high school, they're, they've just lived it, and they're like, they're there. You know, I wouldn't, I mean, you know. So that was mine.
But I just.
No, you're good.
To have on there.
Money.
And your perspective.
All right, so let's add, let's go back to.
I'm feeling bad that I'm on.
Nope, you're in.
So one, one, two administrators, one, one, four, A, one, E, one student support service and three parents.
Your parents.
Three, four, five, nine, ten, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
So you added an administrator there.
So two administrators, four, A, one, E, three parents. I mean, we could do three A and two E too. I don't know. What, if you wanted to get some specialists out of A.
Yeah, I, 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 I did pump that up. I think originally I had three or four. And the reason being is that I'd, I'd like, I'm hoping that you're going to get a variety of volunteers to put into the lottery.
Yeah.
Um, so that we're not representing just one segment, you know.
So you want five?
Uh, hopefully four handles it. Um, you know, I'm, I'm understanding that, uh, we're trying to get a group that, uh, we can coordinate and be successful.
I mean, we only went to fifteen, so it's not really. Well, we got another administrator. I think we lighted the low. We got another parent, which was, uh, it's good, so.
Well, technically, the, the MECO coordinator is a unit A, so that does give them five.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that is true.
That's true.
So just. Well, technically, but soon, hopefully.
Yeah.
She won't be, but.
I was in the vote today.
So they're gonna get, if the MECO coordinator's part of unit A, they're gonna get five members.
Five members anyways.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's a good way to look at it.
Okay, good. And the other way to look at it is, it's still ultimately, it's coming to us. This is the additional screen. Yeah, ultimately, it's coming to us for the, for the finalists. So. You want a motion to this, Gordon, to this whole thing, or no?
Uh, yes, that, that would be helpful, and but, uh, also I need, uh, the unit, or excuse me, the school committee members. I know you volunteer.
But I don't have to be there. Somebody else is. You're good. I mean, if you want an, an alternative, I don't, I don't, I don't know. Did you want to do it still?
She's been thinking about it the whole time.
Looking forward, she was looking forward to the finalists.
That's right.
That's right.
Yeah.
All right, so we need a motion for.
I don't know what the numbers are anymore.
One, one, two, one, one, four, one.
One, two, one, one, four, one, one. One, three, okay. So, um, I move to, um, or to have a, uh, screening and first interview committee that will consist of one school committee member, who will be Greg Thompson, uh, assistant superintendent for business, two building administrators, one at the elementary and one at the secondary level, one E L P S MECO coordinator, one E L P S nurse leader, AKA, um, what's her new title going to be? Administrator of health services. Administrator of health services, uh, four unit A members and related service providers, oh, E L A will conduct a lottery. One unit E member, paraprofessional, also with a lottery, one student support services clerical staff, and three parents, um.
Or guardians, right?
Or.
Yeah.
How are you gonna pick those first?
Um, we were putting together, uh, special education parents that have been part of PAC, but also have been, um, on, on other different committees. And so I'm working with Dr. Wells to put that together and kind of look at a, a list that, um, now at three, that gives us more opportunity to pull from different areas.
Yeah. I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Beth, seconded by Greg. Any further discussion? Thank you for taking this on. Thank you, Greg, for being representative. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose nay, and that motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Dawn, for being with us tonight. Thank you, Heather, and Pam, and Kathy. And with that, I'll turn the motion to June. Motion made by Bill. Second by Beth. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, and that motion carries five to zero. Thank you, everybody.